November 27, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. Good morning.
Good morning.
Varnar, Emergency Management Director. I am here to present the idea or the contract information to consider or ask you all to consider switching from Code Red, our current mass notification software provider, to Genesis Protect system. I have John from Genesis with me to do a brief presentation for you all. In front of you, I have the proposal is the beginning of the tabs, the proposed Code Red five-year changeover, and then our current Code Red contract, which is an annual renewal. And then there's a loose page in there. And that is what our last bill was through Code Red and what our anticipated increase will be because we're on an annual rate and the highlighted amount. John, are you able to share your screen to do the presentation?
Yes, give me one second. Is that sharing?
Yes.
Yes. Awesome. Here, I'll pop up screen. Good morning, everybody. Thank you very much for the time. My name is John Aberzis. I'm the director of Genesis. I got a little bit of echo. Let me try to turn this down. So I'm going to do a high level. So it's a great thing, but Genesis Protect. If you haven't heard of us before, Genesis has been around for nearly 40 years. We actually started as a hardware company. First customer was the U.S. military. We created a long-range acoustic devices. So they're on every Navy vessel. Every branch of the military installed in 100 countries, adapted that to community. Like instead of sirens, like our acoustic devices, add our software components, and we have multitudes of them. I'm going to focus on two that we're going to propose for your community. But we have evac, which is our pre-planning solution. Alert, which is our mass notification solution. These are the two that we'll highlight today. Our acoustics. We also have a collaboration platform that's CDSIP-compliant. And we have real-time traffic modeling, our Traffic AI module. We're, again, installed over 100 countries. We have communities and state implementations. We have sports teams, arenas, automakers. So a array of, you know, public and private sector customers that kind of help us kind of keep adding to our functionality. So our whole system is designed for like this plan-act optimize. So you can pre-plan for your, for your, for the issues, act upon them, most commonly through mass notification and other means, and then do some after-action, be able to clean everything up. So that's how all of our, all of our systems are kind of set up to work, work through. Starting out with something that's really different in the space. We kind of created this initially for wildfire evacuation because the company's headquartered in San Diego. But we've, this is now an all-hazard tool in not just mass notification, but we're including in this, in this proposal, our intelligent zone-based planning tool, evac. So breaking up your community into manageable zones. We use AI and our own in-house GIS. So it's a really easy lift, loading critical facilities. And really what this does is it allows first responders in the field and in the EOC, you can all work together on a single pane of glass, provide more information for your residents, provide more information, you know, and create plans for, you know, officers, cert teams, volunteers, et cetera. Kind of direct people with where shelters are, warming stations, you know, evacuation points, road closures. And it, it does quite a bit. So a common operating picture for the, for the internal and with the public. Built into this system, we have simulation tools. So you can simulate things like fire, flood, dam inundation, even track, like traffic. So if you have to move a large group of people from one side of the, of the community to the other, where the pain points are going to be. So you know where to put those traffic control points. You can also do intersection counts and, and like load your tier-two cameo files and all that kind of stuff in here as well. And like I mentioned, we have a public-facing side. So we have a, obviously, we do the mass notification, voice text, email, social media, all of that, iPOS. But you also have a Genesis Protect website. This can be embedded into your own. There's also a Genesis Protect mobile app. So residents can subscribe to the zone they're in or use the GPS of their device. And within this, there's a lot more information. So a citizen's going to know what's going on north of, east of, west of. You can put additional information, like if this zone is activated for an advisory of some sort, who do you contact? Helpful links. And it's just like a softer touch because you don't have to subscribe to this. Just either go to the website or have our mobile app. And here's an example, the mobile app, all the same information's there. We also have Waze integration. So whenever you are activating an area, putting out a notification, even if it's just a road closure, that will also show up in the Waze navigation tool. And it gives you the ability to, you know, have another mode of communication. And then we have our mass notification tool, a, a, a mobile app. So anyone can launch it from their phone or tablet, as well as on any web browser, very similar to probably what's being used today. But a very easy interface where it's as simple as pick your output channels, type in your message, and, and send it out. It does polygon alerting. It does lists that you can do, use it for internal, like staff list, stuff like that, as well as doing a polygon over a certain area and alerting those particular residents. We're also built on Esri. So ArcGIS is native to us. You can actually load all your ArcGIS stuff in there and all layers and everything become visible within the system automatically. We do iPOS. But not only are we a iPOS authority, which would give you the ability to kind of give us your cog, and you can send out your iPOS messages through us. We have monitoring of the live and lab environment as well as NOAA. So emergency management or whomever can actually create polygons like surrounding areas and certain event codes. And if something's happening in a neighboring community, our system can automatically trigger you so you're aware. So you don't have to sit in front of this and like read all these kind of things as they come in live. And a lot of times, they're going to be their monthly test and everything. So you'll have the ability to monitor that, get phone calls, text, emails, triggered to you automatically. And then you can kind of jump in here and see if it's something that you need to take action on or just be aware of. Our enrollment portal, so you probably have one today. So text, text enroll. But also, we do a really good job of not being a, you know, make everything a Genesis advertisement. So everything is custom branded. We'll put your logos, your color, color palette, put like a picture in the background, FAQs, very customizable. So this way, when the residents want to opt in, they can feel assured that, you know, this is a, you know, a government site and not just like some kind of random vendor. We also give you the ability to kind of customize the information you, you know, you like the basics, name, address, phone number kind of things. But you can add relatives. You can do, kind of create different options. So whether it's special needs or, you know, need more time to evacuate during a, during something or flag football interest. Or I've seen a lot of different options there. And you can kind of create those custom questions within the system. Also, text to keywords included. This is, a lot of the vendors kind of charge extra for it. We just kind of throw it in there because it's a, it's a very powerful tool. Any kind of community events, you can create your own keyword on the fly. People can obviously text in. You have that option. You can also, like say you're having a festival, they opt in. You can also kick them to your enrollment page. So if you actually live here and want life-saving alerts, click this link. What's, what text to keyword is also really useful for. Any of your county buildings, you can do a QR code, and you have an easy way to have vendors, contractors, or visitors. So if you ever needed to do an alert within a, you know, maybe like lock down a building or say maybe we're closed due to snow or something like that, you have the ability to kind of alert all those visitors, contractors, et cetera. And this has optional expiration. So for visitors, every 24 hours. So if I were to come into the county office two days in a row, I'd just have to kind of scan the QR code twice to be able to use, to get those life-saving alerts. So again, this is a standard functionality. So whether it's festivals and stuff like that, the only thing is you really can't use it for is you can't sell it to like a, a private company for their advertising purposes. And that, that is all I have today. Hopefully, I kept it within 10 minutes. I'm Italian, so sometimes that's hard to keep it short. But are there any questions?
I just have a comment. I think you've done a lot of research on this, haven't you, Vanessa?
I have. And that's one thing. I've reached out to three different vendors, and I demoed one of the softwares. And I found it to be less user-friendly than what we're currently utilizing. So I didn't proceed with any pricing on that. Two vendors that have softwares in use in surrounding counties around us, they didn't even contact me back. I know their pricing to be consistent with Code Reds, which I just did some simple math going through Genesis with what our current contract is at the annual pricing. It's going to save us about $500 a year. If we went to Code Red's five-year contract to match the services that Genesis is going to provide us, it would stay, or going with Genesis would save us about $3,700 a year versus staying with Code Red.
Which, so what you're saying is you like the system better and it's less expensive?
Absolutely.
Very good.
So I think I've spoken to two different references within the state. One which is in the implementation phase of the system. And they're very happy. Everything that they've asked of Genesis has been followed through on. They've actually gotten integration of their mass notification messaging into social media. So they don't have that extra step of reposting their messaging into social media. It's automatic now. And then I've talked to another person who, because of multiple projects going on, they weren't able to go with Genesis. They had to continue with their current vendor. And he said that if he had the opportunity to switch tomorrow, he would. He wishes that he could have gotten the buy-in from everybody else in his area. So if the decision were his, it would have happened. So I think it's, it's the most fiscally responsible. And as far as what the system has to offer, it makes the most sense for our community. You guys have any other questions for me?
Very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Committee appointments. Michelle Stevenson, Clerk, Register of Deeds. Good morning. So this morning, I have for you Catherine Metner, who is here for a reappointment to the Ross Common County Economic Development Committee. And I also have Julie Crick, who is here for an appointment to the E911 Authority Board as an employee representative. Anybody have any questions?
Who's the central candidate?
Yes.
Yeah, can you come up and just introduce yourself so that all the board members possibly? Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Catherine Metner, and I'm Chair of the Ross Common County EDC. And I'm here to ask to be reappointed to the board. I've been on the board for several years. I can't remember exactly how many. I have over 22 years' experience in economic development and have truly enjoyed working in Ross Common County. Any questions? Answer any questions?
And I've known the Chair, Chairwoman for several years. She does an exceptional job, and she, her heart's really into it. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Julie Crick, and I work with Michigan State University Extension here in the Ross Common County area. I have a statewide appointment but live locally. Currently serve on the Emergency Management Advisory Board and have a unique network of natural resource professionals that I rely on throughout the state that I believe might be beneficial for the E911 Board. I also have, as a professional, just some problem-solving abilities and a way to look at things in a different light. Hopefully, help out with some good suggestions for the board.
Any questions?
I have no doubt everyone in this room knows who you are. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Holton Lake Area Tourism Bureau, Alma Crossley.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How's everybody today?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Much of your time, and I appreciate you giving me the audience.
Madam Chair, Alma passes. She's also, Alma's also on the Economic Development Board.
Thanks. I was introduced, I think it was just last month, or no?
Thank you.
Just real quickly, I am the Executive Director of the Holton Lake Area Tourism Board. My main mission, of course, is to bring tourism to Ross Common County, get heads and beds because we're fond of the assessments that the hotels and resorts give to the consumers. But basically, if you look at the first case here, one of the things that we want to do for next year is run some authentic, long-year promotions to try to bring people into the community. And what I've discovered is that we need a license required for licenses, for raffles by the charitable gaming division. And the licensing application includes various requirements. And you can see all the requirements on Exhibit A that I've attached, and I'll quickly show that to you. But we have to submit all this stuff. And there's a four-to-six-week lead time to get approval so that we can actually start putting together our promotions that we plan to reach one. So one of the requirements that you'll see highlighted is that I need a copy of a resolution passed by the local body of government stating that the organization is a recognized nonprofit organization in the community. And I did submit that. I believe Joellen has it and may have provided it to you. But basically, you need a vote to say, yes, we approve Holton Lake Area Tourism to be a license to do some events and activities. If you look at Exhibit C, I just thought I'd give you a quick preview of what our thoughts are for the promotion. And that's on the last page. So we are running authentic fund year-round. We're going to run Real Catch, which will run from March 25 through March of '26. And basically, we have over 600 tadfish in all the three lakes in the county, Higgins Lake, Holton Lake, and Lake St. Helen. If you catch a tadfish, it'll be entered into, you automatically get it like a certificate, and you'll be entered into a grand prize award raffle that will run.
What kind of fish?
It can be, well, we have several kinds of fish. Any kind of fish. They're walleye, they're largemouth bass.
And you're having walleye and gins. We have walleye and holten. You know, that's why I said.
We've tagged all kinds of fish in all the lakes.
Okay.
So it could be whatever fish, exactly.
How do you, how do you catch them, big lake trout?
Now you're asking me something I don't have any idea about. I'm not a fisherman. Do I look like a fisherman? I like to do parties, that's all. So, and then the other part is called foul play. And what we're going to do in the October through December time during hunting season, if any of the fowl are shot down that are tagged by the DNR, and we've already talked to the DNR, you'll get an opportunity to win a duck call. And then you'll be entered into a raffle to get a shotgun and like a weekend stay at a hotel. So we're just thinking, this is fun, attractive things that hopefully people will come and say, oh, I want to go to Ross Common County and experience this. Why do I need a license? So this is what I'm hoping, that the next go-around, you can do a vote and approve it so that I can put all the package together and submit it to get approved to, to start running the promotion section.
It's tagged some merganders up on Higgins.
Merganders?
Yeah.
Is that a fish? Are you lying to me? Oh.
Inside joke.
Okay. Anyway, so that's all I have. Any questions? You have the form. You just have to vote and approve it hopefully, and then I can get rolling.
The charitable organizations, does this include like charity poker rooms?
That I wouldn't know. I'd have to ask. But I know for this promotion, because I talked to Phil, is that the charitable gaming division.
Because I know they have in the state, that's why I was wondering.
Yeah, no, I, I don't know. I would think so, but there's certain rules and stipulations for everything that you do. And there's some things, like if you want like a 50/50 one-day raffle, you don't need a license for that. But if you have like a time, and then there's an event date later, you need a license. And some people think, well, you have to solve a ticket. No. If there's any type of consideration, whether you have to catch a fish or chew something down, then you need a license.
I've never played poker, that's why I was wondering.
Oh, okay. Maybe I'll go to Soren Eagle sometime. Any questions?
Excellent, thanks, Alma.
All right, yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
See you next week.
2025 budget presentation by Jody Valentino, Administrator, Controller. If I'm logged in as us, am I able to share my screen? Are you able to? Okay, that's going to be a problem. Okay. So we're going to kind of do this the hard way because I was really hoping I'd be able to share my screen. What if I email it to you? Okay, well, we don't go with that. All right. So we'll have to go with kind of the quick, oh, look, you printed it out. You're such a good girl. We'll go with kind of the quick and dirty version of this. So I emailed all of this to you guys in the morning. Well, and I like to stay up late and work on things. Rex gets the hard copy because he likes hard copies. It's old-fashioned. So essentially, what I'll do really quick for you is scroll down and give you a quick overview of the budget that will be provided to yours, being provided to you. Obviously, for the 2025, this is the 2025 fiscal budget, January 1 through December 31 of 2025. Trust and agency funds and tax payment funds are statutory responsibilities of other elected offices. So those are non-budgeted items. So those are not included if you go searching for them. Some of the quick highlights of the budget that I wanted to make sure you guys know are included in the proposal. The overall taxable value in Ross Common County actually increased 9.1% overall. What that equated to in fund increases was for the general fund, there is a 6.3% increase of taxable collections, $379,299.30. Remember, we're talking an $11 million budget overall for the general fund. So that's just kind of, kind of give you a comparison of where that's at. The Road Patrol Millage was a 6.5% increase, as was Animal Patrol, E911, and Veterans Affairs with those as they stand. We do have the Spongey Moth Program Millage, which was a new millage that was basically double. It increased our revenue $243,178. We also had the recent passing of our Emergency Management Millage, and that has alleviated $89,962 of net expenses from our general fund in 2025. And of course, now they have their own, their own fund dedicated specifically to emergency management purposes. We had a redesign of the state revenue sharing program. They eliminated the county incentive plan requirements, which was basically all the reporting that they made us do on population debt that all had to be submitted by December 1st to the state. And we had a 1% increase, which equates to $40,761 in general fund revenues for 2025. We also had several state changes for court operations that are relevant to the 2025 budget. Obviously, collections of fines and fees for families of juvenile offenders are no longer collectible. That's a, that's a change. So that results in a loss of revenue of $16,800. And those would have gone to cover costs directly related to family court operations. Bond forfeitures and retentions have decreased in our circuit court. That's a loss of about $6,500. However, we do have an anticipated increase of roughly $13,000 in district court for bond forfeitures, which will more than offset that loss. There are reforms for juvenile justice that did increase the state's in-home services reimbursement formula. If you remember from the summer in August, Jake Colini came and presented the 2025 Childcare Fund Budget to you and spoke about the fact that they would have a 75% versus 50% reimbursement from the state, which has cut the general fund allocation for 2025 to the Childcare Fund by $317,000. This reduction actually allowed me to carve out a small set-aside fund balance that would be a portion essentially of the general fund of $92,000 that would be specific for the Childcare Fund. It could only be released from that specific usage by a vote of the Board of Commissioners at that time. So that'll give us a little buffer for, you can have off-years in the Childcare Fund where your budget is a, your budget is a tool, but one, one or two really needy youths can, can set a budget ablaze. So jail revenues are actually projected to increase by roughly $267,000. Over $200,000 of that is due to the housing agreement with us, Quota County. The remaining is the predicted continuing increase for Ross Common County inmates for the average daily population count. We do have a district shared services department that was created for expenses and revenues with the new shared budget with Ogaaw County that's been created with a shared district court administrator. That includes the judge's fringes, shared equipment, software, office equipment, supplies, and the district, district court administrator's total compensation package. Our probate court and family court, when you go through, kind of a note, is that they, they basically have a shared office space, shared staff, shared judge. And they have swapped essentially which employees are coming out of which fund based on looking at the workload data that each employee does. So it looks like there is a decrease in probate expenses and an increase in family court expenses, but they actually have no net change to them when you put them together. So both our district court and our Clerk, Registers of Deeds Office, voluntarily eliminated a full-time vacant position from their budgets. This has provided increased general fund savings of roughly $94,450. These are positions that they have carried and filled, but haven't necessarily, due to over kind of turnover and new jobs people find quickly or not wanting to work for government, have left. And both of the budgetary heads for those departments chose to remove those for hopeful, hopeful increase in the clerk and grade one through five salaries that we'll get to in a little bit. We have funds 839, 840, and 841. Those were created in 2023. Those represent our three lake-level special assessment districts that were established by the Board of Commissioners and the delegated authority. What you will see in those is we have collected a majority of that income for Lake St. Helen and for Holton Lake under the special assessment process this year. So you will see the expenses related to three, three projects, one for each lake, that will be budgeted for in those as well. So those are included in there. We do have a couple of new funds this year. We added Fund 214, which is the Emergency Management Fund. Obviously, that's a result of our millage. We also added Fund 320, which is the Empole's Training Fund. I know that Sheriff has mentioned that to you before. This is specific for the softer side of training for our law enforcement officers and comes directly from the state of Michigan. We also have added Fund 401. 401 is the Capital Improvements Fund. And way back in the spring, our treasurer had come to you and proposed the idea of taking a certain set of interest monies that she had set aside and putting that into a fund for capital improvements. So she had that finalized settlement of that. And we have just slightly over $92,000 that is into that capital improvement fund. So that's a very positive start. We also added departments, a Department Sheriff Cadet Program under our Road Patrol. And that's obviously a state grants for placement and training of cadets in an accredited law enforcement program. Basically, we sponsor them, and they go through the program, and then they have a job here afterwards. So the state pays for that training and wages and fringes as it moves through. Some good news, the allocations for the general fund budget for mental health and district health are unchanged in 2025. Some good news, the allocations for the general fund budget for mental health and district health are unchanged in twenty twenty five. We do see an increase in wages and fringes for front of the court employees. The allocation request from the general fund is up by fifty two thousand three thirty four fifty six. We have new requirements for PFAS monitoring in addition to our additional, like agreements that we already have to monitor under, I say agreements, but the state says we have to, for our landfill. That actually requires the allocation to go from fifteen thousand to eighteen thousand, so a three thousand dollar increase. Law library subscriptions have a percent increase as well, so that allocation will need to go from twenty one thousand to twenty three thousand. Our airport, Blodgett Memorial Airport's twenty twenty five budget includes both rate and revenue and expenses of seven hundred and eighty thousand. I know our airport manager presented quite lengthy during his budget meeting about this, so I'll skip over a lot of it. Essentially, the overall allocation request from the general fund would be increased by twenty nine thousand two sixty two ninety one. And about half of that would be the county's contribution to the seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar project. So roughly twelve thirteen thousand dollars of ours would go through that. Our veteran service department continues to remain physically sound. They do have a fifteen percent fund balance. They have had some staffing changes, and those are reflected in the budget that you'll see. So you'll see some changes as you go through in there. They did choose to eliminate a full-time veterans program coordinator position and created a part-time secretary receptionist position in this budget. The previous duties performed by the coordinator have actually been reassigned to the remaining veterans counselor who is full-time as well. So you'll see that wage, that wage adjustment in there. The animal control program fund is probably the, the biggest scary because it looks so out of balance. They currently have a fund balance of roughly four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is a good thing, because we have a full HVAC replacement, including control panitors, control panels and humidity monitor, monitoring budgeted at four hundred and twenty thousand. The great news is that the voters did renew that millage for four years, so that will allow them to rebuild the fund balance, which the project has completed. We currently have no budgeted for twenty twenty five buildings and grounds improvements, though we will begin utilizing that capital improvements fund to put savings away to replace the one of six spoilers that is not working correctly, since we know that will be about three hundred thousand dollars eventually. We have a nine point two percent increase in our countywide liability insurance cost, which includes automobile coverage, and that is included in the budget. Management information systems spoke to you, there is an increase of fifty thousand in their budget for bulk purchase of computers and equipment needed for all county departments. We have an additional ten thousand dollars over twenty twenty four budgeted to purchase a large order of Xerox paper. I buy it in bulk. It's cheaper. Buildings and Browns hates me because they have to figure out where to put it, but it saves us a lot of money and will last for several years. That's why you'll see a big change in that number for budgeting. So. The overall budget structure had a few small changes. We did eliminate that one big line item at the end of the general fund, that is the healthcare reimbursement account, because ninety percent of the people that are in the general, general fund budget don't have a healthcare reimbursement account. We have gone to a healthcare, the healthcare savings account under the high deductible plan. So each individual department now has an HSA line item that is funded per person based on the agreements that the Board of Commissioners had made. So you'll, you'll see a change in that structure as you go through the budget in the next week reviewing. So those are allotted to each one. We also do not have any statutory elections in odd years, so you'll notice that it seems like the election budget just kind of disappears. But I think Michelle did a great job of explaining that. There's just a few minimal expenses that are budgeted in there to continue training and operations. Our retirement line items all increase, and that is due in large part to defined benefit plans. So we only have defined benefit plans for our union members, which are represented in the sheriff's department unions. However, we have legacy costs associated with the old defined benefits and unfunded liability of roughly twenty three percent. We are on that uphill climb to close the gap on the unfunded liability, so we know that the next several years will show a three to five percent increase for closing the gap on unfunded liability. Then we will flatten out and we'll dip back down again once we're funded. So what you will see is defined contribution match and the defined benefit plan legacy in most of your general fund departments and along with all of your other non-union funds. You're well aware that our healthcare has changed, January one, from Priority Health to Blue Care Network. Obviously, it was a much-needed, well, well-thought and considered decision to avoid an estimated fifty percent increase in priority health premiums. Obviously, the benefit model that the board approved and has adopted is in line with comparable county health plans of, of other counties, and I'll pass you out some data that Noel has collected for us afterwards to look at. Our union members per contract do have to have a health insurance that remains as a healthcare reimbursement account model, but it has been transferred to Blue Care Network as well, which also provided us about twenty percent savings off of that initially fifty percent shock that we have. Probably the biggest thing that you will need to review and consider under the twenty twenty five budget are wages and salaries.
Oh, Jody, before, before you move on to that, I have some questions. We've covered a lot of material here.
Yeah, that's why you take everything home.
And this is the first time I've seen it sent out. I, I noticed right off the bat, we have an increase of nine point one percent in tax collections.
In taxable value.
Well, that's.
But it only equates to six point four percent. That only equated to six point four percent, which is like three hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars for the general fund.
Right, but, 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 but we're, we're, hopefully, the taxable value, we're going to collect on the taxable value eventually, sooner or later, right or not, or?
You only collect a portion of it, because we have all those. When Jamie comes in, she always reports her equalization report. She talks a lot about the captures after the taxable value, like exemptions for veterans or those types of things. So while the taxable value may increase nine point one percent, by the time it gets down to what we can actually bill for, I guess is a good way to put it, we lose two to three percent of that.
Okay, yeah, because our, because our, our budget increased six point three to six point five. So I wanted, you know, we've got, we've got some cushion in there, so I was hoping that that will be able to go towards our.
Some of that collectible amount based on those exemptions that come through.
Right, hopefully, that'll be able to go towards our fund balance, whatever, whatever access is. Okay. Now that we, we should have a little bit of access in the general fund now, because emergency management has been taken out. So that should help us out a little bit with our general fund balance also correct. And maybe I should ask Darlene, because she's on top of this stuff a lot more than I am.
From what she said, it would, it relieved about eighty nine thousand, give or take some.
Okay, okay. And I got a question on the PFAS. Where do we, where do, where do we have an issue with PFAS?
Our landfill.
Okay.
Yep. So that's one of the things that the state has tapped on now, because who knows what was put in there for twenty years before it was closed up.
How much is that going to impact our budget?
Only about three thousand dollars. So the total, the total cost for the landfill is, is about twenty three thousand that we transfer out. Our building and maintenance department actually manages that whole process for us. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, sir. But they manage that whole process under their, their domain of, of buildings and maintenance. We used to years ago pay separately somebody to do that, but they graciously took that on several years ago to save us money.
Okay. In the airport, how much more this year versus last, or how much less this year versus last on the airport?
Um, I'd have to look back, but I want to say it was about twenty nine thousand that I said.
More or less?
Yes, more.
More.
More. Yeah.
The reason for that is going to be our.
Projects.
The projects that are going on. Okay, Derek went over, okay. Was there a fund balance in?
It does, yes. Yep. And I know Eric sent out emails for that.
Some of the twenty nine grand does?
Yes.
Some of the twenty nine, that isn't a flat out. Oh, that's good. Okay, good.
It'll be a year after, so I don't include that in the twenty twenty five budget, but yes.
It doesn't matter.
Yep.
And, and did we have a fund balance at all in the healthcare savings account? In other words, that's gone away. I just was wondering, is that all distributed, or what happens to that? Because?
No, no, no. So the healthcare reimbursement account, that's budgeted for every year in the, in the, in the budget, you mean?
Right, right.
So what that is, is we don't set that aside. That's a part of the pot of money that we have, and as people incur it, we actually pay it. So if they don't use it, it stays and retained into the cash. So the, the HRA that we've been using for twenty twenty four.
But that's gone away, so I'm wondering what happened to the money?
The money's still there. You don't, it's not like an HSA where it goes into a separate account.
Where does it go eventually, or does it gener, eventually go back into the general fund, or?
Yes. It depends on which fund it was paid out of. So if it's a road patrol deputy it was budgeted for, then it stays with two oh seven if it's not spent. Just like any other line item. It's just like any other line item.
Right, you didn't get in, you didn't get in any numbers, but I'm curious, what kind of numbers are we talking about? There we, there we.
Oh, Noel!
There we go. Okay. I, I thought those are important questions to ask. That's, that's why I'm asking. Thank you.
We don't, we don't budget for a full HRA spend of what could happen. We only budget based on the traditional usage, which is roughly twelve to fifteen percent through the last five years. That sound about right, Noel? Yeah. So if we could have a hundred, so if we could have six hundred thousand dollars of liability, we traditionally budget from anywhere from one fifty to two hundred thousand dollars of that, because nobody, very few people max out the HRA as it's gone through. So, and I'll give you information to take home.
And the HRA is something that the employees contribute to also, or?
Uh, no.
It's all us.
The HRA was, was all us. The healthcare savings account model that we're going to for the non-union will be both a county and employee contribution.
It was all us one time, and now that's going to go away, so we're not going to have to spend money on that. Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay, so that'll be able to go back into the general fund.
Correct. Okay.
Thank you.
So I gotta catch myself back up again.
We're wages and salaries.
We run healthcare, wages and salaries, big stuff. Okay.
I did introduce a break there for you, so.
No, that's okay. So the, in two thousand and nineteen, refresher, because not everybody was here, and for the audience, Roscommon County did conduct a countywide job analysis and compensation study to establish a fair and equitable wage scale. And essentially, prior to that, it was kind of a very loose system, I guess would be the way. So the goal was to ensure that the wages remain competitive with other counties, but those counties have to have comparable, comparable population and taxable value. We're not looking at Wayne County when we compare it to Roscommon County. You're looking at Mason County, you are looking at Benzy County, you're looking at Sheboygan County. Similar populations and similar, similar taxable values to us. So that happened, and in that compensation and classification policy, a portion of that was to manage practices and procedures for establishing our wages, rate levels, and assigning pay to positions. So a county wage and salary committee was established. And their largest duty, and I see a couple of them here today, their largest duty was to review comparable wages and fringes by conducting wage surveys annually and then make a recommendation up to the administrative controller in the board based on the results of that survey of where they believed salaries and wages could be or should be provided, a cost of living, or a market adjustment based on that. We've had a bad few years with our budget, and there was a, a large goal, obviously, to make sure that there is a fund balance of a minimum of fifteen percent. So the last few years have, have seen minimal changes from that. That being said, the, the result of this survey that they performed, plus an outside third-party survey that I had shared with you a couple of months ago, found that the several years of the minimal or no increases to our taxable values, along with those unfunded mandates and increased costs, left our position, specifically those in grades one through five. Our scale starts, one is the lowest pay, ten is the highest pay. Our corrections officers and our deputies are well below our market average, anywhere from fourteen percent to eight percent below what you could go and get a job at in, let's say, Crawford County or Ogumaw County, so someplace drivable to here. So based on that data and then analysis, I did prepare an updated twenty twenty five non-union wage scale that I spoke with you about several meetings ago and presented to the Board of Commissioners. Those changes are included in this budget. The updates on wages and on the wage scale focused on increasing grades one through five, those, those bottom half of the tier, where we really found those large discrepancies in pay. Yesterday, I was pumping gas in town, and I looked up and McDonald's is hiring at twelve fifty, and our lowest paying job starts at eleven forty nine. You know, it's like, they're both part-time jobs. One's probably easier than the other. So that, that's just kind of drives home what we're trying to do. Obviously, looking at this, we utilized an average midpoint salary with the same fifteen percent spread that the two thousand and nineteen initial was completed off of. So you've got the, the similarities to the rest of the wage scale, along with equity across the steps. So the positions that actually fell within grades six through nine were found to be slightly above average pay compared with similar counties. So those have not received any kind of a market adjustment, no COLA, nothing like that in this budget or in this scale. There are changes to the wage scale in regards to how they are presented and budgeted. We have found that there are some changes to the Fair Labor Standards Act that require us to be more compliant with the exempt statutes. And so this scale now represents those as salaries in regards to exempt employees and exempt employee statuses to be in compliance with that. And those changes are also in the budget as well. We did have some findings under the union positions. It's in here. Ed and I have discussed it, Sheriff and I have discussed it, and our nine one one has discussed it. We put in for a one dollar per hour increase for all Police Officer Association of Michigan Union members, which are the dispatchers, corrections officers, correction corporals, and road, and deputies that, that fall under that POAM, and then a fifty cent per hour increase for all Command Officer Association of Michigan Union members. Those would be the higher tiered, of course, of the pay grades. That information is all included in the packet for you guys to review and understand. This, this hardest part of this is, is in anything that falls within the general fund, which is mainly your corrections officers. And I would honestly say that I do believe one of Sheriff's, probably one of Sheriff's goal was to increase the revenue by taking on Osceota County inmates in order to get to a fair wage. Now, one of the things to be considered when you look at data is you can talk about non-unions having a comparable total compensation package. They have defined contribution. They now have a change in their structure for healthcare. Our union members still have defined benefit, with the exception of nine one one, they're different. They came on board years ago. And they also still have a certain healthcare plan coverage that is the HRA model under that as well. That being said, when I look at underpaid, I took that into consideration. So to me, if I was looking at an eight percent or a ten percent, I considered it more of a four or a five percent based on that total compensation. So you'll see that information as well as you go in there. I have included for you, and I'm going to have to print it out bigger, because it doesn't look great for you on there, a wage comparison by a position and department, so comparing each position by department, twenty twenty four versus proposed twenty twenty five earnings. What will be a little bit confusing maybe when you look is our unions do have a contracted one percent raise, no matter what happens. And there are steps that they get per contract as well. So what you will see is actually a column that reflects, here's what it is for twenty twenty five for a union person. Here's what it is if you allotted for the additional dollar. I am sure I'm going to get union people calling me, because aside from speaking with our chair about this and our sheriff, this is new. In your packet, you will see that. I do have the non, non-union wage comparisons for you that are presented, along with a fun graph, because I think that illustrates it. And there is a separate page as well for the union wages for you to see. And just to give you kind of a quick, quick idea of where we're at, it is basically the same thing that we found with our non-union positions. Your lowest paid positions for our unions are a corrections officer. Our current top out pay for a corrections officer is twenty dollars and sixty cents. The average pay is twenty three dollars and seventy three cents, so roughly fourteen percent below. So like I said, you cut that in half, you're still seven percent below, and by all. And by all means, we are competing for law enforcement positions. Um, so that is, that is one to be there. Sheriff can, Sheriff could always provide you more information if you wanted to direct dial him and talk to him a little bit more about the competition, pay rates, and what he has found in his budgets for that as well. Um, healthcare benefits, obviously, I think we've killed. Um, what you will see is that for um an increase over 2024 across the budget, totally all funds will be $522,000, $522,059.65, give or take some rounding. Um, it is split pretty evenly between union and non-union employees despite the change. Um, our general fund total increase was $261,943.72. Now, a portion of this has to be considered that we have employees, um newer employees that have come on that are taking family insurance. Where before, maybe they've replaced somebody who was um, you know, only taking a single or a two-person. So I know in friend of the court, there have been some changes for 2025, and so that is represented in there as well. So that's important in there. So essentially, you have this really long packet that's going to be attached. And I'll print it out for any of you that would like it and put it on the website. Um, but it is a totality of the budget report that will provide you with the 2025 controller budget that I am presenting to you for consideration. Um, comparison to the 2024 amended budget. And then that will also include um our 2024 activity to date for each line item by department. Um, I did total it out by department, by expenses and revenues. As Commissioner Wolfson said, you should, so I did. So it's in there for you to review. Um, so then you can see clearly the total line dollar amount difference for that. Um, that being said, I know that you will have questions. Um, it is Thanksgiving tomorrow, and I don't expect to hear from you then. Uh, but if you wanted to schedule a special meeting to review that, just let me know. And please make sure Clerk Stevenson has somebody available.
I have a quick question right now. I'm noticing that our wages are below, but we've always said that our benefit package is more, and I know we've talked about this before, uh, you know, outside meeting. Is our benefit pack, are our benefit packages, our healthcare and everything like that, still better than other counties? Or is it the same or less? Or where are we at in there? Because that sometimes offsets the wages.
It does. I agree with you. Um, and it actually has for years. So um Noel, did you go away? Did you fall asleep? Come on up Noel!
Sorry to ask you questions, guys, I'm.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I had Noel do the research on this because obviously, like I told somebody the other day, I have a Noel for a reason. The general answer is for our non-union employees, we are now um in a comparable boat to other counties. With the new change.
I know, that's what she told me. That's why I wanted to bring it up.
But that's, I figured I'd have Noel come and.
She's hand, she's real handy around Christmas time, too. There you go.
Uh, so actually, um, what she just passed out is something that I, I stayed up a little late to do. Um, so sorry if I don't make any sense. I'll try to make as best sense as I can. Um, but the front page is essentially um Ross Common um for the last couple of years. Um, for 2023 and 2024, um, we were basically the same in for spending. And so that's why there's only three columns for single, two-person and family. Um, for 2025, I had to split it because um obviously, we're going to be H S A for our union and then um H R A for union purposes. So um, and then um for the top columns, um I utilized an average um H R A spend. And then for the bottom columns, I actually utilized um what the total potential spend was for the H R A. Because uh technically, um, we were on the hook for a full $4,000 for single or $8,000 for family or two-person.
A year.
A year, yes. For the year of two, of 2023, and then for 2024. And then now moving into 2025, um, $6,000 for in uh individual or $12,000 uh for two-person or family. So I just wanted to make sure that the numbers reflected that correctly. Um, so then that way, when we were looking at an overall true percent increase, we'd say we weren't just taking the average. Um, because not every single person in the H R A was actually utilizing H R A. Um, in fact, just for, just a quick note, um like in 2023, eight people of the single 29 members didn't even use the H R A um in 2023. So um that's 26%. So just, just to, just um I figured it was giving us a little bit better of an idea, um just giving two different perspectives.
So getting back to my original question.
Yes.
How are our benefits in comparison to other counties? More or less the same?
So we are now um in a much, non-union, we are in a much more comparable. In fact, I would say um almost mirror-like uh plan in comparison to many of our comparison counties now. Um, in fact, uh Benzie County, um one of our comparables, and then um actually another one of um Advantage Benefits Group, our third party, um another county that they actually administer. Um, and they are, um they received a 42% increase uh with us getting our 50. And so they ended up in a very, very similar model to us. Um, so uh Sheboygan County um has actually been in an H S A plan um with a either a 1,630 or 3,000, or now they're in a 1,650, um 3,300 H S A plan. Um, moving into 2025, um and they've been in this H S A for three or four years. They received a 25% increase this year. So that's why their um deductibles moving up this year. Um, so um then Mason County, they have like 12 different plans that you could choose from. All of them, except for two or three, have H S A plans. Um, and again, you can kind of go through all of the different things of the, the co-pays are different and, you know, the different coverages of co-insurance are a little bit different. However, they're all boiled down to, a lot of them are high deductible plans with out-of-pocket costs. Um, and that uh the huge difference when this really boils down to it is that um we used to have no out-of-pocket cost. We covered the deductible 100%. And that's what made our insurance the best that it was. Um, and that's what I always told everybody when they would come on, on, on board, is that really what makes our plan, the plan that it is, is that of course, 100% of coverage after deductible would be great. But you don't even care really because we're paying that deductible 100%. So um now, we're kind of somewhat back to where we were in 2023 as far as costs go. If you look at the max that we would have to have spent in 2023 for H R A costs, non-union wise. Uh, however, the big difference is our non-union people are now having to have to fork out at least $23.50 um for out-of-pocket or for up to $4,700 for a two-person or for a family that they were never having to do before. And if you look across the board, they've only had in the last couple of years, a one and a half increase in their wages. Where other counties, where they've had these ki- type of plans, um, they've had either a 2.5% over the last couple of years, a 3% or a 5% in what, in the couple of counties that I was able to look at that had comparable um insurance plans to ours.
And, and the reason I'm asking this is for our taxpayers and constituents benefit, that they know in the past, things have been different.
Yes.
And if we're gonna be asking for increases in pay for our employees, we have to be able to justify that.
Absolutely.
Uh, and I don't want to just, okay, everything's fine without letting everybody know that it's important that we're on a, at least an even keel with the rest of the counties. So if our benefit package is now the same, where before it used to be substantially higher and we use that as a, as a draw to get people to work for us, now we're on a comparatively even keel with the rest of the counties. So we may even be a little bit less in pay. Some justify, we have to have the justification to our taxpayers on why we're asking for an increase in pay when we're under all these budget constraints. We just, I'm gonna get into some of this later on and some of the other issues that we're gonna be talking about. But, you know, we have to look at this as, we're representing the taxpayers. I'm a taxpayer, everybody out here is a taxpayer. And we have to be able to justify why we're asking for an increase in pay for the hard workers here in, in Ross Common County. Thanks.
Yeah, and I think communication of why um the increases are being asked and, and what the insurance uh changes is important. Then that way, um, I think that if everyone understands what the changes are, it, it does kind of make a lot of sense of increases are being asked.
You've been doing a great job, by the way.
Thank you.
She does, doesn't she? I'm lucky. I will tell you too, I mean, as, as the department has um budget administrators for each department and fund have been crafting and creating and moving things together. The main focus has been two-part. Um, wanting to see that your boots-on-the-ground employees do receive a fair and equitable wage. Um, you know, especially with the change in healthcare insurance, but also focusing on just continuing that fiscal responsibility. Um, what I will tell you, just as, as kind of some final numbers, we are looking general fund, and we talked a lot about the general fund for the public because that's our big pot of money that 76% of all of our operations that are statutory come out of. Um, and we don't have any control over that funding. Um, it is an ad valorem tax that comes as it is based on taxable value. Um, so we will be heading into um 2025 with roughly a 17, 17% fund balance. And this is up from when this board actually took office a year and a half, almost two years ago. Um, from 14%. So there's been some pretty good accolades in that area. Um, but the budget administrators for all of the funds in all of the departments, um, if they could combine it or trim it or go without, um, which they traditionally have done anyhow, but they focused even more so on this this year. Um, I'll use the district court shared services as, as a really good option. Um, you can look at that and you can say, oh my gosh, we're adding a whole new budget to district court services. But it actually ends up being just a minimal drop in overall expenses because of some of those larger, um larger, larger budget items now that we're gonna be splitting with Oglemont County. Um, so that being said, just kind of your, your bottom line for your general fund, which when you go through with your ruler, you will find um while we do have roughly a 4.5% increase in revenues and roughly a uh 4.3% increase in expenses, there is actually um about a 1.5% fund balance increase budgeted in of $190,991.76.
Well, that gets us up to, as far as percentage and.
That will actually put us, so essentially, a percent is roughly 1.1. So that will put us up to, if we come in at a 17%, that would put us up to about 19, 19 and a half. So for a total fund now.
15 last year, wrong, yeah?
We were, but this year we're projected to come out closer to 18%.
Okay.
But we're gonna allocate the promise you made out for the lump sum.
Right.
And that'll bring us a little bit back down again. So.
Fund balance percentage.
It takes more money to raise that fund balance percentage one.
That is correct, yes. So what you'd be going off of is, so your fund balance that you would need for 2025 would be based on your $11,295.849, not your $10,827.945. Um, which is why I said 17 and not 18%. So, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jody.
Thanks Noel. Thank you.
Thank you.
With no other questions, then this meeting will be adjourned and we will come back for our next meeting at 10:15.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Here.
Wolfson?
Here.
Russo?
Here.
Censor?
Here.
Here.
Approval of the agenda?
Ben and Chair?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call? Wolfson?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Astergren?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda, we are including meeting minutes from November 13th Lake Level Control Structure Meeting, 11:13 Board Meeting, 11:13 Budget and Finance Committee of the Hall Meeting, 11:13 Special Meeting for the Department 2025 Budget Presentations, and 11:20 Special Meeting for the Department 2025 Budget Presentations. Correspondences A through C's, which included letters to the Board of Commissioners and MAC Legislative Updates. Um, we didn't have any monthly department reports. Do I have a motion?
Let me make the motion.
Second? Roll call, please? Wilburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk Register of Deeds update.
Hi, I'm not prepared. The uh, the election has been certified by the State Board of Canvassers. So we are just finishing up with that. We'll have post-election audits that we will be notified. There is a recount filed that does not affect Ross Common County, thankfully. Um, but once they've got that all sorted out, then we'll have to do a post-election audit. And they'll do a random draw and I'll find out one jurisdiction that I will have to go to and perform an audit of all of the materials from the election itself.
Pardon me, who's the recount for?
I don't remember, but it's not us. It's 40, it's like the 44th District. It's a Senate or Congress or something like that.
More pardon.
Yeah. No.
Wait, so the elect state hasn't certified the election yet?
They have.
Okay, but.
The state, once the state certifies the election, then there's 48 hours to make the recount on the state level. So, um, we already had passed our recount filing deadline. Um, we're still dealing with, well, we're not anymore. There was a little bit of shuffling around with positions in some of the townships. So um there will be some partial terms for township positions on the um 2026 elections. We have that. Uh, we are working on just finishing up stuff for the year and make sure we've got everything. We're working on the meeting dates and such for 2020, 2025. I was gonna say 2026. I was just gonna skip 2025. But uh, for 2025. Um, so we will, I will be reaching out just to get some confirmation. But of course, these are also topics that we can discuss at the organizational meeting, which is again, January 2nd at 9 o'clock AM here. I will be getting the agenda put together and get that emailed out to all of you and posted online prior. Um, so I'm gonna try to have it done a little bit earlier just because with the holidays and everything, everybody has a chance. We're coming right back in on January 2nd. And I don't have anything else. My birthday, so be nice.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Public comment. Lana?
He's not public.
I'm sort of public. Dunlow, Sheriff's Office. I want to start by saying that I respect every one of you individually. And I'm not here to yell at you. I know you guys get yelled at by the community a lot and that you are just trying to do your job to the best you can. But this doesn't come from that sort of spirit. It comes from me giving my input because I think we're a little off base. I hear rumor that there is opposition to the E911 discretionary pay. And I'd like to address that for a second. What Jody said in her uh report last meeting is true. We have been scraping and scratching and trying to keep employees for the last several years. Trying to stay competitive, trying to do everything we can to keep and retain positions. Positions in emergency services are unlike any other job that we have in this county. Besides the Sheriff's Office and E911, everyone else will be home with their families on the holidays. They will be home sleeping at night. They will be with their fam- the holidays, they will be home sleeping at night, they will be with their families doing all the things that they are supposed to be doing. It's a different kind of job that you sign up for. I regularly have people in my office talking to me about how they love our agency, but trying to get by on the pay in the current economy is difficult, and I'm not here to talk about my agency, but I understand what they're going through over there. Trying to keep employees in a good work environment is difficult enough. These people gave up their entire summer to keep our 911 dispatch center open. It's not a question of, did we pay them? We certainly paid them. If one more person had quit, that 911 center would have shut down. I'm still a little bit surprised that it's open today. I thank the sheriff and Jessica and Rebecca and Jody and everybody that was involved in trying to keep that place open and making it as successful as it is today. But I think we have to realize what those people went through. 911 has an authority board of seven members throughout this county in emergency services. They voted unanimously to approve this pay. We have very, very dedicated employees, not just in emergency services, in all parts of this county, and this is where, please don't take this as me yelling at you, but I think they feel trampled on often by the county, and I know that's not often intended. But when we can pay Chase $125 an hour to do his job, and then we question 1% or 2% for our employees that are fighting tooth and nail to keep things open and running properly around the county, I think that's an issue. And so I would ask you, I realize that's coming up on the agenda, normally I wait if I have public comment until the end, but I wanted you to hear my comments before that discussion happened. This has already been approved by a different authority board, that money does not affect your general budget. I think those employees overwhelmingly deserve something for what they did this summer to save this county. I know the sheriff would agree with that if he was here, he's not here today, but I know he is 100% behind that also. We have great employees, and I realize we have budget constraints, and I've been a part of trying to fix that for many years. But I think sometimes we have to look at it and say, what do our employees deserve based on the effort that they're putting in? Thank you.
Any other public comment? Visitors, do we have any visitors? Unfinished business. Airport taxiway project. Does anybody want to start? You want to start, or you want me to start?
Just brief.
Remind Eric's going to start. I guess he's going to start.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks.
One minute or two minutes?
You saw this spreadsheet at my presentation on 1113. And there was a tendency on what the local share of certain projects were going to be, and we did contact Betsy Stidl, who handles the programming in the block range for all the airports in the state of Michigan. And it was their understanding that for the bill money, we're talking about the bill money, okay? That FAA was going to match at a 90% rate, 5% state, 5% local. The FAA has decided to match at a 95% rate, which then the state decided, well, they're going to keep their 5% match. There's zero match on the local side. Eight, zero. Now, I just learned yesterday, let's go back and talk about the $15,000, that we had the fund for the design for the taxi lane design project. You were going to be, you know, originally it was 5% match, it's $750. If you look there, look at item, it circled there, the $15,000 under the total column there, our share would have been $750, or could have been as low as 2.5% match or 375. That's going to be matched at 100% now. A bill money.
So 750 goes away. Sorry, no.
It goes away. Okay, and so we're going to get reimbursed the entire $15,000. And reimbursement's not going to come until September or October of next year. So, that's good news. Now, if we look at, there's the four projects, okay? If you look at the locals here, and in the far right column, the four-unit T-hanger design is zero. See that there? Taxi lane design, 750 is now zero. Taxi lane construction is now zero. And the four-unit T-hanger construction is zero, local share. Okay, so what needs to be stressed here is that getting $815,000 of mostly FAA bill money, the state is going to match $41,500 of that $815,000 at a zero local share. Utilizing every bit of bill money we have at our availability, using all of it, and it's going to be gone more in the week, you know? The four-unit T-hanger construction is the last bill money we'll have at our disposal to use against that, unless I just decide they want to have another infrastructure. Well, it's all going to revert back, the projects moving forward after the T-hanger construction is going to go back to our regular FAA grant fund. They can change, but that's bull right.
On the sheet that you handed us, the top section is dealing with other things than the taxi runway?
That's correct.
They are not tied to this other project by any means?
No, that, the project you see for the runway lighting reconstruction, our portion of that is $29,050. It's in the airport budget. $29,050 is the county share for that project. There's no bill money in there.
So the $15,000 that we get back was not in the budget?
It was. Yes, it was. We showed it as an expense, but we're showing it
As a wage.
Revenue on the reimbursement.
So the $29,262 additional in your budget, the $15,000 has no bearing on that whatsoever?
That's correct.
It's still an increase of $29,262?
That's correct. Now, with the $15,000, okay? Brian Merk is our airport engineer with Pride of New Hall. We met yesterday to have a pre-bid meeting for the construction for the runway lighting. We had contractors come in so that we could go over the construction details for the runway lighting. And so after that meeting, you know, I had discussion with Brian about this $15,000, and he said that they would allow us to float that $15,000. Okay, in other words, they wouldn't invoice us for probably about eight or nine months.
I'm not concerned about the $15,000 anymore at all.
But I'm just telling you, you know, that Pride of New Hall, they want to work with us, they said they need to make money on all this stuff, okay, but I'm trying to work with them, they're working with us to try and keep this thing moving along. Any other questions? Then I have a question, I mean, we would
Yes, I do.
Asking that we move on this engineering agreement with Pride of New Hall for the $15,000. I don't think a motion is required until we get a sponsor contract, and I sent out an email of explaining that in simple terms, okay? So.
In your first presentation, you showed a chart that we were going to be on the hook for $40,000 for the hangars. And that's gone away, is that correct?
Zero now. It's zero, okay? And we got confirmation from Betsy Stidl, okay? She has the programming department at Air Nods, because I might posit go from the $40,000 to zero, you know? And that sheet that you see right there was submitted to FAA for our ACIP Airport Capital Improvement Plan. That's what went to the FAA, but she had changed it prior to her submitting that. But we showed on the presentation was that, that $40,000 that you saw there. Because the bill money is now going to be matched at 95% and that 90%, the state's going to pick up the other five, since it goes to zero. It
Good work, Eric.
It's good stuff, really, and I wish we had more bill money. No, maybe, maybe it'll come, I don't know. That's funny, I'm asking us to approve engineering contract with Pride of New Hall and the county to contract, it's an agreement, and they can keep moving forward.
And when it comes time to design the hangars, that's going to be covered also?
Design the hangars is another project, it's anywhere.
That's already, okay.
And our share for that is zero, too.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments?
We have a meeting next Thursday, right, Eric? Eric, next Thursday?
Yes, sir.
You have a meeting next Thursday?
Yes, December 5th.
Yeah, I'll see you there. Even I'll both be there, along with Michelle and Judy.
Michelle won't be there. I guess I have one question, I do have a question. When is the last time hanger rent has been increased?
Last year.
It was last, yeah, 2023.
23? You remember what it went from to?
They all went up $20 a month.
What were they at?
Well, we had two different numbers depending on the hanger. Went from $150 to $170, and then $100 to $130. I have on the agenda for the December 5th meeting, another discussion on that to increase again.
Okay.
Pardon me?
Yes.
My thoughts are, we need to increase it by that $30. I know there's been some discussion, increasing to $30. I'm looking at a proposal like $20 a month for the next year, and then 2026, maybe a $10 bump. That's what I'm looking to propose next Wednesday, next Thursday. We don't want to, the thing is, we'd put a motion out in front of the boards, commissioners, to officiate it, to make sure it was official. I like the idea of giving somebody a heads-up before we raise the rent. Excellent, Chair.
Thank you. B, the prosecutor's letter of opinion regarding the two-thirds petition. Everybody has that in front of them. Any questions in regards to that?
Looks pretty straightforward to me.
And then up would be E91 discretionary pay. This is up for discussion, thoughts? Yep.
I agree with the undersheriff, what he said today. Even though they did get their overtime pay, if they didn't work the overtime, we had to bring employees in from El Pino. They made a lot more money, plus travel time and all that kind of stuff. If we couldn't get additional employees and if they didn't work, we would have had to sub it out to, or out of Gaylord, that would have cost a lot of money. So our employees saved the tax people in our county a lot of money by working the way they did. I feel they deserve it. They worked a lot of hours, and we should move on with this. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes.
I was unsure how to consider moving this thing forward. I didn't make my comments public, but I was, I've never seen Ben Low do that much passion. I've had a respect for Ben Low for the last 20 years that I've known him, and you've convinced me along with my colleague to the left. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, Chair. When we make a decision on this, my decision will not be based on whether someone deserved it or not. It'll be based on if we're creating inequity in how our employees countywide are paid, and also how the public would view it.
Anybody else?
You know, this is a really sensitive proposal that got thrown around in front of us in the first place, and it'd be really easy to approve because it's not my money, it's not your money, it's the taxpayers' money. And I'm really torn on this issue because I believe public protection is the government's most responsible and important duty. As Rex said, it wouldn't be fair to the rest of the employees who work here. I'm sorry, I'm making comments. Okay, okay, it wouldn't be fair to the rest of the employees who work here, and I'm sure there are a lot of those employees that would have welcomed overtime pay. It isn't fair to the taxpayers who we represent. I don't think the 9/11 employees are doing their job for the money, I really don't. I think they're doing it to serve our community. While it's important to recognize the extraordinary efforts made by the 911 employees under our current budget restraints, we just don't have the money. We can't keep adding unbudgeted expenses to our county. Jody just shared with us a few moments ago that we've had it really bad for the last few years. We've been whacking programs and expenses all over the place, and we've eliminated many of those. I'm in favor of the $1 pay raise for the police, but paying a bonus out there is a real stretch for me. We need additional personnel, we should step up and get some more people. I don't think it's fair also comparing $125 an hour business charges compared to whatever we pay the 911 employees, because there's a lot of additional expenses. You've got auto expenses, insurance expenses, all those other things that are covered in that type of thing. And you know, I don't know when we're going to vote on this, I still haven't made up my mind. But now that it's out there in front of us, it puts us on a real spot, because we've got the 911 employees that are concerned with us recognizing them. I think we should recognize them, maybe there's something else we can do, I don't know. Is, I don't know who exactly came up with the $3,000 or whatever that amount is, or how we even arrived at that. But it's a pretty substantial total amount of money. What is the total amount?
I don't have it right in front of me. I don't have it right in front of me on that.
I mean.
Fifteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-five cents.
Fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-five cents.
Spread over how many employees, five?
That is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight employees, and that includes FICA and retirement.
Okay, so it's about two thousand an employee. Like I said, I'm really torn on this, and I don't know which, I really don't know which way to go, but my tendency is not to prove it. They, they were, they were eight time and a half, and I know right now our other, I don't know how the other employees are going to feel. I don't know how our constituents and the taxpayers are going to feel about us adding this additional burden. And then on the other hand, you know, we've got them protecting the public, which is very, very important task, so. This is going to be probably the most difficult decision I've had to make on any of the uh, issues that I've had to deal with over the last two years. I'm usually pretty solid in one camp or the other, but I'm in the middle on this, so I don't, I don't know what we, what we need to do.
I agree, I mean, this one is a hard one for me as well. Um, I've looked at it from a few different options. One, I've always worked with the private sector. Um, I think it's nice when your employers do recognize the effort that you put into something and when you go above and beyond for different things. Um, but then you go to the flip side, what precedent does that set for other employees within the county? And once you do it once, how can you then not do it if it's brought to you again? And so, I'm with you, I, I.
Well, I mean.
It's, it's hard, there could be, maybe there's something in between. Maybe it's not exactly what was presented to us, maybe there's a happy medium in there as far as figures go.
You solidified my decision by saying protect the public, that's what they're doing. I mean, again, I was in the same boat, you are, but again, protecting the public is what I focused on. Good comments.
Yes, Rebecca?
Is this?
No, but we've done it before, so I'm going to let her talk about it.
I sit on the nine-one-one authority board, and I first want to make a comment on what you said about hiring more people. It is very hard to get people, number one, to pass the test, number two, to stay on. It is a hard job. Over the summer last year, when they were going through what they were going through with a lack of staffing, a director, lack of director, those employees did so much more. I, I even went there on Fourth of July weekend and brought food and drinks for them and watched what they were going through, and not only did they miss their summer, but they were tired. And they were being asked to come back to fill this hole, to fill this hole, and lack of vacation. And also to answer your question about other employees, when we went through COVID, there was an incentive, or I'm not quite sure what they called it, um, given to the staff that came in while everybody else was at home still making what they made normally. They came in and they worked during the months that COVID was hot and heavy. And you guys gave them an incentive or a thank you for that, so we have done it in the past.
That was federal money, that was, am I wrong on that? Is that federal, federal money not out of our budget?
What was federal COVID money, yes.
Okay, and the money that we're asking for, for these folks doesn't come out of the general fund either, it comes out of their millage money. If you folks feel that the two thousand is too much, well then work with them, but they deserve something for what they have done and what they continue to do as public servants.
I, I, I have an idea. Instead of paying it out in one month sum, in one year, maybe split it up over two years to spread the budget out. Help us with the budget, that, that, I mean, that would, the employees have to understand that we're dealing with.
Okay with that budget.
The E nine-one-one budget where the monies would be coming from is, it's got the money there to cover it.
Yes.
It's real easy for us to sit back and say, well, other employees, but they're not like other employees.
It's not, Rebecca, it is, this is not easy.
These are, these jobs are extremely stressful. That's why we have a hard time keeping the amount of people we need in there to be fully staffed, because it is stressful. So, that's all I have to say, thank you.
When El Pino came down here, correct me if I'm wrong, they didn't get our wages, they got their wages. They made more than our people.
And we paid them?
Yes.
Correct, we contracted. Um, it sounds like the dissension is not whether or not the eighty-plus hours per week that five full-time and three part-time employees work to keep the center open. Um, it sounds like the, the nexus of the problem is the total dollar amount that would be paid. Um, and I don't know if any of you have a suggestion, I mean, if you're looking at maybe an alternative is a flat fee, a flat dollar amount for full-time, a flat dollar amount for part-times. Um, I will preface.
I'm sorry, this isn't a flat dollar amount?
No, this is, this is the.
Each employee has a separate amount based on how many overtime hours, how many PTO hours, comp hours. That's how their amounts.
Work more than the other, you don't want, you want, you want them to be, if we did do this, you'd want them to be compensated that way, though.
That is, that is how the request comes through, but if the board is, is not comfortable with that, but you do think something may be warranted, I mean, I think and it would be appropriate for somebody to suggest an alternate. Um, I will tell you, when you talk about spending taxpayer dollar money, um, it's been a really long time since I worked in a fire EMS department. But if we were to transition where MSP were to take our calls, they would take law enforcement calls only. Um, your local fire EMS department would be manning the desk for your nine-one-one calls. Um, and the amount of money that that would cost your local township in staffing would be quite interesting if they were able to staff it at all. Um, so, there is a monetary offset to that, but my thought was if, if this is, you know, the formula, the figuration is the total dollar amount is where the, the issue lies, then perhaps somebody offering an alternative would, would be appropriate. Anybody having questions up here? I know, but if we keep letting the public speak during our discussion, that's, I know. Jessica, if you want to come up, we'll give you a couple minutes.
Yeah.
I'll keep it brief, because I think you guys already know what it is that we're asking. You keep saying other departments, other employees. I don't think we can compare what they did and what they went through to other departments and other employees. I physically had dispatchers sleeping in our break room during that five months, because it wasn't worth it to them to drive home before they had to fill the next shift. I had to call a nighttime dispatcher after just leaving her shift for two hours to come back to work. She was gone for two hours after working a sixteen-hour shift to come back to work, to answer the phone, to make sure that our taxpayers had the help they needed. I had dispatchers calling me in tears for five months because they did not want to have to keep doing it, but they did. So it's about the money, but it's not just about the money. So I, I really hope that we can work together. It's, it's not just, we can't just give them a pizza party and say thank you.
Thank you.
Let me, one quick comment as a member of the public.
And, well, we're not going to make a decision, so during public comment, we'll let you do that, as a member, yeah.
Yes.
I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward on this next meeting, I'm agreeing with David. Trust me, after twenty years in the Marine Corps, I know how it feels to work on a birthday, Christmas, Thanksgiving, every holiday. There's every holiday I worked on, feeling those two, twenty-four hours a day, you work. I feel comfortable with the decision that's moved forward, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other comments? We don't have any new business, so we're on to motions and resolutions. Michelle, whenever you are ready.
Uh, motion number one, move to authorize a one-time, one and a half percent of base salary lump sum payroll payment to all non-union employees, elected and appointed officials excluding Board of Commissioners, and a one-time one percent of base salary lump sum payroll payment to all union employees as authorized by the Board of Commissioners on November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Payment of lump sums will be for employees hired prior to January one, two thousand twenty-four, and will be based on two thousand twenty-four base salaries, prorated as necessary for employees that left employment prior to approval of payment. Employees that left employment in other than good standing will not be eligible.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Roll call.
Ostergren.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number two, move to reappoint Bill Leeson to the Roscommon County Blodget Memorial Airport Advisory Committee for a two-year term beginning one-one, two thousand twenty-five through twelve-thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. There are residency requirement for this?
I don't think so.
Residency requirement?
I don't think so, Rex, I've never seen one in regard to this before, this is an advisory board. A good question, thank you.
Roll call.
Wilson.
Yes.
Ostergren.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number three, move to reappoint Sean Petrie to the Roscommon County Economic Development Committee for a three-year term beginning eleven-twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-four through nine-thirty, two thousand twenty-seven.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Discussion.
Mr. Petrie's in the audience, Madam Chair.
Roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Ostergren.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number four, move to appoint Angela Ackley to the Roscommon County E nine-one-one Authority Board for a three-year term beginning eleven-twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-four through nine-thirty, two thousand twenty-seven.
So moved.
Discussion.
Roll call. Ostergren.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number five, move to enter into contract with Prime and New Hope Engineering for an estimated expense of eight thousand dollars plus permit fees for the purpose of developing a project design for repairs to stabilize the control structure located on the southeast corner of Higgins Lake, Higgins Lake Lake Level Control Structure.
So moved.
Second, discussion.
Yes. I'm really happy to see that we're finally moving forward with something on Higgins Lake, especially with everything else going on with Holden and the years and years of litigation and the problems that we had this last year with not having a licensed engineer sign this form, which I, 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 I can't believe happened, uh, so I'm really happy with this, and I hope everybody approves this motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And this permit covers re-establishing the stream bed to the level it should be, is that?
From my understanding, yes.
I'm sorry?
The, the contract read for stabilization.
Yes.
I thought our objective was to re-establish the stream bed going through the opening at the level it should be in order to retain water in Higgins Lake.
I would assume that that meant establishing the stream bed.
It does talk about develop a design detailing the repair of the scour hole, so I would assume that that means yes.
I mean, they, these folks are the ones that, that shot all the elevations in the stream bed that show, or in the uh, uh spillway that showed it was up to thirteen inches below the footing. So I'm assuming, you know, since these are the same engineers that did that, I'm assuming they're repairing that.
I will reach out to them as well, just to verify.
More conversation.
Yep.
I mean, to, today, I mean, it's crazy, okay? Today, Higgins Lake is eleven point one-six inches below the legal level and, which means it's five point one-six inches below the maximum winter drawdown, because the spillway has eroded so much. It's in terrible shape.
That's what I want to address.
Yes, yes. Holden, Holden averages, uh, right now is five point three-four below summer level.
Well.
Or only point six-six, so there we go, I'm just saying, this is a comparison.
Roll call, please. Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Ostergren.
Yes.
Motion carried. Number six, move to accept a donation of six thousand five hundred dollars from the Higgins Lake Land Conservancy to be utilized for the sole purpose of funding of the required engineering for submission of a permit to request modifications to the Higgins Lake Lake Level Control Structure. Donation to be reimbursed to the Higgins Lake Land Conservancy through future special assessment district funding.
Discussion.
Yes, I see we're moving forward with this, too, and I really want to thank the Higgins Lake Land Conservancy for stepping up to the plate. I don't think they should have had to do that, but it's nice that they did. I think we should have been able to move ahead with this project on our own. Uh, but this is going to save the taxpayers a lot, you know, sixty-five hundred bucks. Uh, so, you know, I want to, you know, I think that we need to show some offer of uh, thank you to the Higgins Lake Lands and Conservancy sometime in the near future.
Any other comments, question? Roll call.
Wilson.
Yes.
Ostergren.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Committee, committee reports. And Ostergren.
Yes, I attended the emergency management meeting last week, eleven-twenty-one, twenty-four, and a lot of issues were discussed, emergency code red application that. Oh, and, I mean, Vanessa was talking about earlier, was discussed, and the new Genesis app was also discussed. Uh, we have over a thousand users right now in the code red app, and they're going to have to migrate over to the Genesis app. Um, how public meetings, closed meetings will be held, uh, before the emergency management meeting was discussed, and it suggested that public meeting be held immediately after a closed meeting. Regular emergency management meetings are held monthly now, and that will save everyone having to make two different meetings at different times, so that was discussed. Uh, NIMS compliance, all departments uh, got a questionnaire regarding NIMS, NIMS, which stands for the National Incident Management System. Um, and they answered all of that. We, uh, we've stopped all cyber attacks nationally. Uh, there were no local attacks on our IT computer systems, power orgages, uh, were not related that they had, were not related to the election and normal issues like trees falling on power lines, et cetera, was what happened. Uh, there's mention that the Red Hat Ladies had a meeting, and that was fun for whoever attended. Seventeen people attended the planning meeting, and they're going to close down the roads uh, for a five and ten K runs on January eighteenth through the nineteenth and the twenty-fifth. Uh, zip uptown and Santa Craig. Uh, police report, uh, they're going to hand out turkeys. Uh, cadet is getting ready to graduate, and three more are on schedule for January and will graduate in May. Garry is sponsoring cadets, uh, they're having problems with finding qualified folks, as we've been talking about earlier. Uh, hiring people, uh, they've hired some and they've washed out, uh, and one of the reasons they feel they've been having problems in hiring new police officers is a lot of the negative publicity towards police. Hopefully after this last election, that's going to change. Uh, fire report, firefighter one and two just started. A ladder truck is out of service for two weeks, uh, the medical report, the rescue tax force training just took place, twenty-four people were trained. Everyone that attended had good. Everyone that attended had good reports. Control, I discussed the lake level issues that we've been having and how we're going to be moving forward with all of that and reported that to the board. Warning, 911 is still looking for people with the ham, for ham radio to help with communications. They have a crew right now of three of emergency ham radio operators, and they want more in our area. Our group came, and for some good news, our group came in third in the state out of 14 and simulated emergency events with the ham radios. Ken Melvin says they're working on getting other people with PIO. Public Works, the road commission is working on normal road construction this year, nothing out of the ordinary. Public Health, hooping cough is on the rise. They had the first case of monkey pox in California, so hopefully we don't get monkey pox up here in Michigan. A lot of people are moving from California to Michigan, so we better, we better watch it. Anyway, Human Services, they had nothing out of the ordinary going on. Transportation report, they're still looking for drivers, and they're having problems with folks passing the drug test. Animal Services report, they attended a class on animal control. They need radios, and HVAC issues is a problem, as we all discussed earlier in the meeting. And 350K is going to be allocated towards that. That was covered earlier, I should have, I double reported on that. Hazmat, pneumonia bacterial sickness has been running throughout the high school. I don't know if anybody here has experienced that or known what's been going on with pneumonia. Life me, I did not know the kids got pneumonia. I thought that was something that old people got. Anyway, that was, that's the end of my report.
Commissioner Milburn.
CAA up in Trevor City. I've asked Shannon Phelps and Tish Dave to possibly grace our commissioners meeting in January, February, depending on what the chairman feels at the time. And COA elected Phyllis Pietrowski, Roberta Carey, Rachel Corwin as the representatives. OCO meeting for December. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Russo.
I had the agenda meeting last Thursday, and none of the committees met between then and now.
As far as the materials management, which is AKA recycling, I have been putting together people for the Training Commission Committee. Ron Alden from Roscommon Village will be representing the village on that committee. Scott Exstrom will represent the Soil Conservation District on that. Connie Foster from Foster Builders will represent the building industry on that committee. That's it.
Other comments? Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Phil Bindley. I think y'all, y'all know me, but listening to your discussion on the 911 base situation, as a member of the public, it scared the heck out of me. The thought that we may lose 911 in the county is is scary. We depend on that. As I get older, I realize just how much we depend on it more and more. I don't have to work on budgets, I like that, but I also do rely on emergency services. I know from personal experience how much these people work and what the conditions are like there. They do a heck of a job, so just keep that in mind from the public side out here. It could scare the heck out of us if things aren't taken care of in 911. Keep the employees in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did notice a skip word comment, so I will come back to it.
Thank you, I was going to say.
I see everybody standing up. I don't know why, but I guess I'll stand just, it's just real quick. The boards kept saying, "public safety." I live on Holton Lake, and flooding is a real concern. I believe Mr. Russo said he banked six-plus inches of water. Currently, we're at a legal winter level. I can set my home, wind comes up, it's actually quite peaceful. Waves hardly even come up on the seawall. Typically, a windstorm comes and the waves break over the seawall. They flood my yard, and it's windy enough, the spray out of the lake hits my house. I'm in a real windy area. You want to come over and see my house? It used to be called Birch Point where I lived, but it's since been eroded away. Again, life-threatening floods, what we've had to endure in the past. And now, I guess you're talking about banking water, having a study to do so. And it scares me and my family that you would do this to the people in our community. Legal lake levels pose no threat. Flood levels do. Secondly, environmental impact statement. Raise a lake level, I think, would be quite necessary. We have endangered species in our lake, wild rice is one. It's coming along quite well because we've had a legal lake level the past few years, or the past year anyway, and the wild rice is doing quite well. I believe the type of wild rice we have is seen aquatic interior facet, but some reports indicate that it's actually an endangered species. An environmental impact statement from the fisheries would be important. I don't know how you can go ahead to get a temporary raise in a lake level, again, without an environmental impact statement. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Come on up.
Just real quickly, I know I already had my fair. And not to argue with you, Mr. Ostergren, just want to tell you where I'm coming from on this. I understand and I agree with you that there are other expenses included in that $125 now. I get that. But what I'm trying to express to you is, and please take this too, I like Chase. I think Chase does a great job. This is nothing against Chase. But I think overall, I've heard from many county agencies over the last several years that there is a consensus that we really care about the lakes and not so much about our employees. And that was just a representation of what people sometimes think is the priorities of the board. And I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other public comment? Yes.
Michelle Stevenson. I've been here for 12 years now and seen a lot of things. And, you know, I I respect our central dispatch department, and we've been, I've been around for a few directors now. And just the things that, you know, not even what's been brought here to these board meetings, but the scuttlebutt you hear throughout the county building or in the community. And the fact that we were at a place that we were at last year with the possibility of having to close our central dispatch department, you know, when, over the years, we've had previous directors come and say, "Oh, well, we'd like to partner with this county and provide services for this county." So thankfully, we had people that were willing to come and support our community for a change. You know, they have, they have their own mileage money. They, the public voted that. The public voted to support the 911 services for this community, and they continue to do so. I'm part of that public. While, yes, I'm an elected official, but I'm also part of that public. And I've had to call central dispatch before. And having the comfort of knowing that when I reach out, they have the capacity to know where in the county we're at, you know, where they need to send. So if you think about it in the grand scheme of things, $15,000 is a small amount to thank those people who spent hundreds of hours, additional hours, doing a job supporting this community. And when I think about the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we've spent in lawsuits or in engineering stuff and studies and everything that we're going to have to do in improving the structures on our lakes, while, yes, that's going to hopefully improve tourism and bring in budget, you know, bring in dollars to our community, we're still going to need that central dispatch department in order to facilitate those emergencies out on the lake, to facilitate those, any emergencies that occur with the influx of people visiting our community. So I really feel like $15,200 to eight people who stepped up and did the job that needed to be done is a small ask.
Any other public comment? Well.
Noel Martin, employee of Roscommon County. And that's how I come to you right now. I just wanted to let you know, as an employee of Roscommon County, you've mentioned a lot, I heard a lot of you mention about employees and their viewpoint of what that might look like as an employee. I personally would love our central dispatch employees to be recognized because they are the unseen. They never get to participate in any county function for employees ever. They are always behind the closed door. They routinely have never, or they routinely never, they routinely feel like they are the redheaded child. And that's, you know, in their words, when I've seen them outside of work because it's never at work that you see them. You know, they are my coworkers, however, I don't see them. And they sustained a vital, central nervous system of our employee system, of our county. And it was on the backs of themselves and their families, their children. So as an employee, I have no problem with them getting the due diligence that they so well deserve. And I hope that if there was another employee or another self, several employees or something down the line, that there was money available to do something with, that they would also be able to maybe get something of that sort. But I don't think it's an expectation, and that's just my employee opinion. So I just wanted you to hear from an employee. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? We'll go back to board comment now. Sorry about that.
Great, and I should have, sorry, I should have waited to cover this in the board comment. As I was mentioning earlier, I'm just going to continue on. Higgins Lake is 11.16 inches below summer legal level or 5.16 inches below maximum winter drawdown. There are only one, there's only one gauge operating on Higgins Lake right now, where we're scheduled for four. And when I talked to the folks at Hi-Fi, they said the reason for that is that the water is so low, measuring devices won't even work on the other three. So hopefully, they'll get those three up, the other three up. Holton Lake has two gauges averaging 5.34 inches below summer level or .66 inches above maximum winter drawdown, so they're perfectly legal right now. St. Helen is three inches over summer level or nine inches above maximum winter drawdown. And maximum winter drawdown, they're still legal. They're still within the court orders objective. So hopefully, the other issues with Higgins Lake will be resolved. And Hi-Fi also, by the way, I've been getting reports in there, and it's, they're really good reports. It's not confusing with a datum and a age level and everything else. It just takes straight at-sea-level markings, and it's very simple and easy to understand. They're in the process, and I have it done by Jan, or by December 6th, I'm being told. They're going to have the feet measurements converted to inches, so it'll be really simple and easy for the public to get that. I'm going to send out an email blast to my constituents after that's done and get email addresses over to Rex, who's been working directly with Hi-Fi. So anyone that wants to get those measurements will be able to get it, and hopefully, they'll also be able to get them off the county website. I'm assuming we're going to be able to get them off the county website. Is that correct?
That's the plan.
That's the plan.
So then everybody will be able to get those, all those measurements. It'll be easy to see, right?
Whatever, I'm still waiting.
You're not getting an email now? Not getting an email now?
No. I don't know, I gave it to, maybe I have it this morning, I haven't checked.
Anyway.
I didn't get it from you, Rex.
No, you're not supposed to, it was supposed to come from Ariel.
Comes from Hi-Fi.
Yes. Maybe I have it on my spam.
I don't know.
Could be.
Confirm your email address with me after the meeting.
Anyway, that's, that's my kind, I'm really happy to see this board is moving forward with Higgins Lake. Finally, finally moving forward, and we're, and we're going to get something done. And it's, I found it really, really puzzling why they could do everything down on Holton Lake without a licensed engineer's signature and Chase was doing it, but they required it for Higgins. I believe that's a violation of equal amendment, our constitutional 14th amendment, equal protection clause of the 14th amendment. So we can now get that straightened around. Thank you.
Commissioner Milburn.
I want to say I really value public comment. I often come here a little undecided in certain issues. When I do hear public comment, I try to come in with an open mind. It's really tough to lead a commissioner. It's sometimes tougher to be public. So I do appreciate the well-thought-out of the comments, and I appreciate people voicing their opinion because it helps solidify my decision. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Russo.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes.
I would have to agree with Commissioner Milburn. Public comment, I do value what people say, and I do take that into consideration when I'm trying to make decisions, especially the really hard decisions. So, thank you.
Commissioner Wilson.
On the subject of public comment, public comment has just shown us overwhelming evidence that the right thing to do on the 911 discretionary pay is to move forward with it.
Thank you, Rex.
Thanks, Rex.
With no further comments, this meeting is adjourned. All in favor, say aye.